Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Lord is our God, and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President.
Ms. Lynch? Yes. Mr. Kind?
Present.
Mr. Sandy?
Present.
Ms. Tallman?
Present.
Mr. Reynolds?
Present.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Mr. Rockhold?
Present.
Mr. Reed?
Present.
Madam Clerk, would we have a call? Yes, we do. Uh, minutes? Tell us who you received minutes from. Our last two needs, one on December 14th and one December 21st. Do you have any corrections? Mr. President. Mr. Rockhold.
I move to approve both December 14th and December 21st together, please.
Second. The first and the second. Madam Clerk, the vote, please. Ms. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Kind?
Yes.
Mr. Sandy?
Yes.
Ms. Tallman?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Rockhold?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Do we have reports from standing or special committees?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rockhold?
Not so much from a committee, but the fact that you and I from the council, Ms. Tallman, all three of us attended the exit of the island. And overall, the island has found to be very good to go some small. Kind of improvements are driving things overall. It's very clean and good odds that was done at the city park.
Thank you, Mr. Rockhold. Any other reports of standing in special committees? Hearing none, I'll move on. And I'd like to, at this time, make my appointments for the committees. And I'll probably do that in Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to thank you in advance for your hard work that you're going to go through this year. And I appreciate your attendance. I also want to make mention that just because you're not on certain committees, I would encourage all council members to attend any of our standing committees that you find that you can, always look at that. First of all, the 2011 budget hearings will be chaired by Mr. John Rockhold as vice president. Moving on to our standing committees, Mr. Kind's Finance Committee, I'd ask that you chair that for us once again this year. I would appoint myself also as vice chairman. Ms. Tallman, Ms. Wilcox, and John Rockhold will also serve on that committee. Public Works Committee, Mr. Reynolds, once again would ask you to chair that. Vice chair on that committee would be Ms. Wilcox, myself, Mr. Sandy, and Ms. Lynch. Personnel Committee, Mr. Joyce, if you would, I'd like to ask that you chair that for us. Ms. Lynch, if you would, vice chair that. Mr. Kind, Mr. Reynolds, and Mr. Rockhold will also serve on that committee. In addition, we have ten, which I would refer to as outside or other committees. I've asked if you wanted me to serve on one of those. And we'll start with the Area Roundtable. Mr. Rockhold. Wood County Recreation Commission, Mr. Joyce. Municipal Planning Commission, Ms. Lynch. Municipal Tree Commission, Mr. Reynolds. House Committee, John Sandy. Holiday and the Parks, Nancy Wilcox. Downtown Task Force, John Rockhold. Urban Renewal Authority, Ms. Tallman will chair that. Urban Renewal Authority, Vice Chair will be Ms. Wilcox. Bi-Centennial Commission will be Sharon Lynch. That is all the committees that I've pointed so far. Do we have a message from the executive?
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, members of council, Madam Clerk. First, I'd like to thank WTAP Television for again airing this meeting live so citizens can hear the issues for themselves instead of the paraphrase or abbreviated versions that we often see. This process started in September with the announcement of St. Joseph's Hospital would become a nonprofit entity. The user fee has been the most discussed issue since the new form of government in Parkersburg was enacted. It has been falsely reported to news media several times now that I proposed the user fee. However, I chose not to challenge this error because I do favor the user fee over the other anti-business alternatives like BNO taxes and utility taxes. And I want to present that in the sphere of cooperation and support between the administration and city council through this difficult process. I also want to avoid layoffs as I fail to see how adding more people to the employment line can be helpful to this community or helpful to the local community. Layoffs are not free, and we would spend 10,000 taxpayers' dollars paying employees to stay at home. During this process, I faced the public, I faced the city employees to give city council members a breathing room necessary to go about the task of legislating. This administration has provided every imaginable piece of information to city council members, the news media, and to the public. However, a negative campaign was launched through the editorials, letters to the editors, blogs, and other means to make it appear that the city government has committed some wrongdoing, even though most cities in the United States are going through the same crisis. City employees have been subjected to name-calling, the likes of which they probably have to pursue in elementary school. There has been absolutely no credit and very little acknowledgement through the media for the $2 million in costs that haven't been cut during the recession since 2008 when the economy began falling under the Bush administration. No credit or acknowledgement has been given for the fact that we are still within our budget in this current year. People misunderstand that a great deal. Those who are reeling against the city refuse to do their homework on these issues. If the user fee passes tonight, I'm prepared to move the city forward as I have in the last five years. And if it is not passed, I'm prepared to follow the city council's wishes and reduce services to a level that was set in Parkersburg back several decades and will completely eliminate any prospect of future economic growth. At this time, I leave this decision to Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Newell. At this time, I'll move into the public forum. Anyone who comes forward and wants to speak to the city council? Let me first of all say, not concerning the user fee, there will be a public hearing on the user fees, so if you want to speak on that, please wait for the public hearing. Sir, do you wish to speak in public forum?
I'm not going to speak.
Sir, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is David Huffman, and my address is 910 Juliana Street.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to comment on something the mayor said about the Tea Partiers. I guess he's called, uh, named, you know, the people that are sticking up for this country and the city, the Tea Partiers. He mentioned that, um, he mentioned that where were they when federal mandates came down? And mandates come down from the state as well? Well, I like to tell the mayor that that's what the, that's what the Tea Partiers are all about, sticking up against mandates. So I asked him to give us all those mandates under the Freedom of Information Act. I'm David Huffman. He can, I can pick it up or he could deliver it to my law office. And I'd be happy to address it. And all the Tea Party participants would be happy to address it. We don't like mandates. We don't like tentacles of control to come down from the federal government to the states or to the municipalities, or the states down to the cities and municipalities. We don't like that. It's not good. But at the same token, the way the city got itself in trouble is by not saying no to a lot of the money that came down from the federal government. And also, when you ask for things from the federal government and it requires you to pay 50% of, back to the federal government or to be able to complete a project, you put yourself in a bind. And that's what happened with the city park. And now, now you're paying, now the city's paying back, uh, I don't know, what is it? $180,000 a year?
$180,000.
Well, this, this is why the city's gotta, gotta start cutting and not asking for things that it's gonna trap it and then allow other entities such as the state and the federal government to control it. So I gotta say.
Sir, your time, now, please.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who would like to speak in public forum?
Yes, my name is Robert Casto. I live at 2104 Nash Street. I'm a citizen of Parkersburg and have lived here all my life. I've never seen such changes in the past few years, which has brung me up. I didn't care much about politics until I seen the arrogance of what's happening. You threatened to close the swimming pools. You don't need to own the swimming pools. You need to lease them out. You need to get them out of your control. You're running our city. You're not running businesses. This is a small business, your swimming pools, and there's many other issues. I've talked with over 50 people in restaurants and in the convenience stores, and if you impose this tax on these people, there's some of them who will lose their jobs. Then the employers are gonna have to retrain employees, which costs them more money, which causes an accountant to make more money because they're gonna have to take this out of their pay, so they charge more money. Every sheet of paper my accountant does for me, he charges me for. So every employee, every business will have to pay more accounting fees. Wisdom is what you need, not your own opinion of what we need. We are the people of Parkersburg, West Virginia, standing up to say, "We don't want this." I'm not against it, but I feel that you need to put a level on it, like $250 if your net pay is less than $250, you don't have to pay it. That will leave the waitresses, the dishwashers, the convenience store workers, and the people that are struggling. You make plenty of money to live on, but they don't.
Right, you don't.
Many people don't.
Thank you, sir.
Is my time up that quick? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else who'd like to make comment in the public forum?
My name's Garnet Powell. I live at 1211 Fortis Street, Parkersburg. Mr. Reed is my...
Good evening, Garn. I'm Mr. Sidney.
Um, at the last meeting, Mr. Rockhold...
Please, please step up for the mic if you can, so everyone can hear you.
You can't hear me?
I don't know if I can hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. Um, let me change my thought. At the last meeting, Mr. Rockhold said that he was in Denver and they paid $10. Is that what we're up to next? You know, it is, taxation is killing this town. And the, when I go to a restaurant, I talk to people. I talk to the people waiting on me. And if you people are out there talking, how in God's name can you do this to people? And if you'd have got by with it two, a month ago, it would have happened on Christmas Eve. I, I just think it's shameful. And I just want to stand up for those that aren't being represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause) Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, I would suggest that you remind that this is not a public hearing yet, but this is a public forum. They'll have the opportunity to speak to that issue at the public hearing.
Okay. My name is Alicia Flannery, and I'm from Harrisville. And I'm here to say I really love Parkersburg, of what I've seen, the changes, and people that feel as though they're above us, you know? Like he said a while ago, "It's us little people. You haven't taken time to listen to us. You may listen to us for a little bit, but tonight you'll go home and it's like, poof, never heard us." This is a great state here. I mean, West Virginia, you want workers to come? How are they gonna come if they're gonna be taxed for this stuff?
Okay.
You know?
May I?
I know, I know what you're saying.
Let's talk about something other than the user fee. We'll talk about that in a few minutes.
Well, you know, we need to do something about getting more work. Are we gonna get more work if we're gonna have to shove out more money? I mean, we have resources, and we, we're always wanting people to come to Parkersburg. What if we got to offer them, accept more taxes? I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have comments in the public forum other than the user fee? We will get to that just in a few minutes. If not, I will say that the public forum is closed. Move on to ordinance final reading.
And ordinance adopting Article 780, city service user fee in the amount of $2.50 per week.
Mr. President. Mr. Rockhold.
Do you approve the ordinance on final reading?
Second. Have it approved in the second? All right, we now have the clear of the public hearing on the user fee. Open anyone else who would like to speak on the user fee? Please come forward.
My name is Kevin Roberts. I don't want to get confused with Keith Roberts. I'm a small business owner. Mayor, I think you're wrong. This is a BNO tax. As a small business owner, I'm not gonna put it on my employees. I'm gonna pay it out of my pocket. And that's gonna cause me to keep moving out of Parkersburg. We do say there's very few construction jobs right now in the city of Parkersburg, and I've seen there being very, very less, less and less every year. Um, I guess the next thing I'm gonna say is, let's look at another way to get some of this money. The loophole that's allowing all these nonprofits to become a nonprofit status needs to be looked at like they're doing in a lot of the other cities in the United States today. There's a lot of these big nonprofit organizations that pay no taxes in Parkersburg that own a majority of land in Parkersburg that are not seeing any tax off of it. Maybe you guys need to take a look at that and see if you need to change that ordinance, pull some money back off the people that aren't paying money, keep it away from us that are trying to actually do business in the state, in the city, and try to keep it coming in.
Thank you, sir.
I, um, I pay $10,000 a year, BNO taxes. And if you only make 10% of your gross, that's 10% of your net. And I pay, and I pay that without any complaints, okay? But I have 17 employees, and I'm gonna take up for them. What, what the city's gonna do, it's not only chasing the employers out, now they're gonna chase the employees out of the city. Think about it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Sandy Stats, 4409 Seventeenth Avenue, Parkersburg, West Virginia. I would just like to make a statement to remind the mayor and the council that the Tea Party, I've heard some comments from council members, that we're making fools of ourselves. We're here to represent the people, which is what you all are paid to do. We don't get paid for it. But if this user pa, fee passes, the recall will go forward, as we have stated, and I really don't want to do that. I'm hoping that you all can make a better decision. The main thing is, for every one of us here wearing a yellow t-shirt, there's 100 at home that support us. I'd just like you to know that.
My name's Don Sebold. I live at 509 Canal Street. This is the second time I've been up to this mic. First time I was here to make a complaint about the police department, it took 45 minutes to get to South Side. Noel was the chief at that time. Had made him mad. He wrote eleven councils, they had no legal right to be here.
Sir, we'll have new, uh, facts.
I'm getting, I'm getting to my...
Just state your facts. State your facts.
I was in District Two, and I was talking to some people there, and nobody there that I ran into wants this user fee. I've been talking to a lot of businesses and everything in this town. None of them wants this user fee. About 10% of the businesses I talked to said if this user fee goes through, they're gonna move out of this town. Is this what this community wants, less business? There's even talk on South Side of succeeding from downtown Parkersburg. Is that what you guys want? There's a lot of options that we, the public people, have, and we're gonna take them. And recall will be in effect. We will make an announcement tomorrow morning, depending how this user fee is voted on tonight. We will not be strong-armed by the mayor. We're gonna go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up very much time, but I was at the IRS office the other day paying taxes.
Please state your name again.
Oh, my name's Robert Casto, 2104 Nash Street, Parkersburg, West Virginia.
Thank you.
I was at the IRS office, and the ladies down there, when I brought this issue up, they all, the whole office, come at me because they have to pay for their parking. Can you not supply parking for the people that even is in Parkersburg? Have you not checked that out? They pay as much as $60 a month for a parking spot to come to work.
You did?
Now, I think that is a little bit ridiculous also.
I did.
And now you want to take a little more money from them. I don't know where you're coming from with it, but I think that this back BNO tax needs to be collected. That's why I'm at the IRS office trying to catch up on back taxes. My business is very failing, very much. I've already moved out of the city because I couldn't keep up. And I think, I know most of the businesses is thinking of these things. Small business cannot exist. And like the other gentleman said, he's gonna pay the user fee out of his own pocket. I would too. But I don't have any employees right at the moment because I let them go due to the economy and the weather. And I had to pay $25 to the state of West Virginia in order not to have employees to file with the insurance commissioner. It cost me $25 not to have employees. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Yes, my name is Alicia, and as I said, I live in Harrisville. And I only work three days here in this town here. And you know, for the price of gas and coming here for just three days, for the hours that I put in, it's not worth it. It's really not worth it. I really would like to come here and not have to put up extra money because I want to work. My husband's retired, I'm retired, and that's what we old people are doing right now, is trying to collect on what we can. Has anybody, mayor, have you ever been a waitress? Do you know what it's like standing on your feet for eight hours?
May I state your facts to the council?
Okay.
Not to the mayor.
Standing on your feet for eight hours.
This is our meeting, it's not the mayor's meeting. It's my meeting.
Standing on your feet for eight hours. Do you know what it's like? And then have to turn around and pay for a babysitter, pay for the gas?
That's right.
It's really something. And then now, we have to turn around and think about maybe they're gonna take a little bit more out of our check to pay for whatever mistakes have been made because nobody knew how to handle the money right? This is really disgrace. It really is. And like I said, I like Parkersburg, but surely we can all work together and do something better than to try to get it to somebody else's pocketbook that's barely making it, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment in the public forum? As a hearing, Keith.
Michael Hall, Mineral Wells, West Virginia. I'm not a resident of the city of Parkersburg, but my wife and I both work here, so this very much will affect us. One thing I would like to, for council to do prior to voting for this, which I'm sure you're going to, I've accepted that fact, is at least clarify what this money is gonna go for. Specifically, what will this money go for? Every time, and I've been to everything but one, every one but one meeting here, and it seems to change. And now tomorrow morning, probably in the newspaper, it will change again as to what this money is to be used for. So please clarify before you vote what specifically this money will be used for. One other thing I'd like to remind the city council is I believe that when you were sworn into office, you took an oath. And part of that oath was to defend the Constitution. Most public officials in the state of West Virginia take that oath. To defend the Constitution, nowhere in the Constitution does it say that you're allowed to have taxation without representation. That is what you're gonna vote for, I feel. Home rule. Couple meetings ago, home rule was the buzzword. The Tea Party was reprimanded for not helping to bring about home rule. The West Virginia legislature was talked about in a negative manner because home rule is not passed. When I see what's going on in the city of Parkersburg, I will work on home rule with legislature this year to not allow home rule to come into effect. Cities such as what you're doing right now illustrates, I think, everybody the danger of home rule. So I'm glad it was brought up as a buzzword. One other thing, I know that I'm not supposed to speak about directly to anybody in particular, so I'm not going to, but as I've watched this, and again, I don't live in the city of Parkersburg, but as I've watched this take into effect, the give and take, there's been one councilwoman that I've been impressed with, I have to say. She obviously knows her constituents, she knows their problems, and she's working to defend them. I appreciate that, even though I'm not a citizen. If I was, I would vote for her and very much would support her, and I appreciate it, and I've noticed what she's done. So, thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
My name is David Passidon. I live at 4016 Tenth Avenue in South Parkersburg. I appreciate this opportunity to address council. One of the questions, I asked the question tonight, why the fees need, fees need to be implement, implemented tonight at this meeting. I was at a meeting prior last year, fees were at $3 then. With the wave of my hand, they went to $2.50. Now they're at $2.50. And over the past four months, the real problem of the budget, I don't feel, has been addressed by council. Before a fee is implemented on us, the people of Parkersburg, I think some things should be brought forth and should be, I know there have been cuts to budget and such, but other ways should be looked at before we just implement a fee. We need to have some substantial cuts. We need to make the tough decisions. They are tough. They're terrible. People would happen, would lose their job, or services might be cut. But these things need to be looked at before every one of us in Parkersburg has to bear the brunt of a fee like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Ball, former member of city council, former member of Board of Zoning Appeals. I live at 1204 Juliana Street here in town. Mayor Newell, Madam Clerk, President Reed, members of council. When you decide to run for office, you know you're gonna have tough decisions. You're not always going to like the decisions you have to make, but you ran for office to represent all people, not just your neighbors or your neighborhood or your district, but the entire area of your town. When you go to vote on this issue this evening, I encourage you to vote in favor of it. Don't be led by intimidation or fear that they're gonna have some kind of a recall. That goes with running for office. You're either gonna win or lose, and every time you run for reelection, that's the odds that you face. Take the bull by the horns, be responsible, represent your city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Cheryl Huffman. I live at 910 Juliana Street in Parkersburg, West Virginia. My husband is attorney David Huffman. He does pay $10,000 a year, BNO fees. He does not know where that money goes. He doesn't have a clue. And if it's the last thing I do, I'm gonna get him and his 17 employees out of this town. I was born and raised here, and I... I was born and raised here, and I never thought that I would see the day that a group of people could rule all of us and not listen to us. You're going to be taking $2.50 a week out of my paycheck. I can afford it, but I don't think you deserve my $2.50 a week. And I don't think you deserve these people's $2.50 a week. The population was 33,000 in this town. Since it says now, it's down to 29,000. And before y'all get done with it, it's going to be a lot less. Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Could I ask a question?
No, sir. Anyone else, please? All right, I will declare the public hearing closed. Members of council, questions? No questions from council. Connie, vote please.
Ms. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch, yes. Mr. Kimes?
No.
Mr. Sandy?
No.
Ms. Tolman?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Rockhold?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Have a motion for adjournment, please.
Okay, see, we've got work to do.